Yeah, I know we're dinner. Yeah, I know we're dinner. We were starving. I knew you gonna sit up here and eat. I knew you gonna sit up here and eat.
This one looks great. This one looks great.
Doesn't she look fantastic? Doesn't she look fantastic? She's really looking good. We're talking about you. She's really looking good. We're talking about you.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do. I do. I ain't ready to go nowhere, Lord. I ain't ready to go nowhere, Lord.
No. No.
Oh, that's her. Oh, that's her.
It must be the color. It gotta be the color. It must be the color. It gotta be the color.
It looks, it's your color. It looks, it's your color.
I had that coffee, yeah, all day. I had that coffee, yeah, all day.
That in your hair, the color in your hair together? That in your hair, the color in your hair together?
I'm clerk. We have roll call, please. I'm clerk. We have roll call, please.
Mayor Parton. Mayor Parton.
Here. Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Vice Mayor Gore.
You gonna wait till we get her on? You gonna wait till we get her on?
Yeah, she's on. Yeah, she's on.
I got it. I got it. She has herself. She has herself.
Yeah. Yeah. Vice Mayor Gore, can you hear us? Vice Mayor Gore, can you hear us?
You got yourself muted. You got yourself muted.
Yeah, I can hear you now. Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, we're just in roll call. It's your turn. Okay, we're just in roll call. It's your turn.
So, here. So, here. Counselor Joyner. Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Denton.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Holloway. Counselor Holloway.
Here. Here.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion to allow Vice Mayor Gore to participate virtually? Okay. At this time, is there a motion to allow Vice Mayor Gore to participate virtually?
So moved. So moved.
Second that. Second that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
At this time, Vice Mayor Gore, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and your reason? At this time, Vice Mayor Gore, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and your reason?
I'm conducting a meeting from my home and hope our reasoning is, uh, health precautions for pregnancy. I'm conducting a meeting from my home and hope our reasoning is, uh, health precautions for pregnancy.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Counselor Pelham? Uh, Counselor Pelham?
Can we make amendment to that motion to add, uh, Dr. Mincker? Can we make amendment to that motion to add, uh, Dr. Mincker?
Well, she can. She can automatically participate. She's not voting. Well, she can. She can automatically participate. She's not voting.
She will have to vote for her. Okay. She will have to vote for her. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please. Uh-huh. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Parton. Mayor Parton.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Denton.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Counselor Holloway.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Joyner. Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, Is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby? and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any discussion? Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please. Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Parton. Mayor Parton.
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore. Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Counselor Holloway.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Joyner. Counselor Joyner.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Okay.
Is your motion cannot close? It's over?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Session discussion, seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris? Did I say yes? Vice Mayor Gore?
She might still be trying to get that online.
Counselor Denton?
Say yeah.
Say yeah, we're coming out of closed session.
Wait, I thought you were still trying to get Janice. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Pella?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Janice Petet to the... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we gotta do certification. Uh, can you please read the certification? Uh, can you please read the certification?
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Harris. Mayor Parton. Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Janice Petet to the Hopewell Prince George Healthy Families Advisory Board?
Some.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Moving on to our work session.
Good evening, Council members and citizens. My name is Jason Cowan. I'm gonna speak briefly about, um, give a recap of the reassessment the city recently completed and the kind of the results of the Board of Equalization. First off, a little bit about myself. The contractor for the reassessment and also the interim assessor after the permanent assessor left to go to Chesterfield. Have a Bachelor of Science in Real Estate from VCU. I've taken about thirty other classes postgraduate altogether, most of them specific to assessment work. Got about fifteen years of experience. I'm also an assessment instructor and most importantly, I'm certified by the Virginia Department of Taxation to do this type of work. Also, a little bit about the new assessor, we'll hear from her towards the end of this presentation. Her name is Ms. Bourne. She was recently hired as the permanent assessor. She went to Radford University, majored in business, the minor in economics altogether. She has thirty-seven years of appraisal experience. She has extensive knowledge with the Code of Virginia. She's a very good administrator. She actually used to train for the Department of Taxation. She would go around and trade the Board of Equalizations across the state and help them understand the code and their jobs. She's a certified general appraiser. She led the Advanced Assessor School in Virginia with the Department of Taxation for several years and is also qualified for the Department of Taxation. So why are we all here? The local government needs to be funded and the assessment office across the country, the work that they do, the real estate taxes usually make up between forty and sixty percent of any given city or county's budget. So it's an important office, it's an important function, it's, it's good that, yeah, people are well-qualified professionals to do it. Few points about real estate taxes, of course, they're based upon the value of the property. So if you have a nice property, you'll pay more in taxes. If you have a lower-end property, you'll pay less in taxes. The city does have a program for people who can't afford to pay their taxes. There are certain exemptions that are usually income and asset-based, elderly, disabled. Those programs are administered by the Commissioner of Revenue. So in order to carry out the assessment function, the assessors do four things. They discover property, they list property, they value property, and ultimately, they tax property. When they're discovering property, you basically answer questions about what is this property? Is it new or old? Is it big or small, renovated, unrenovated? And those sorts of facts are gathered two ways, primarily in the field when you're going out taking measurements and also deeds and records and surveys. Everything that's recorded in the city clerk's office, we have to analyze and update the property records accordingly. So it's a big task and there's about ten thousand four hundred properties in the city and there's usually at least thirty facts that we have to get right for the assessment to be considered accurate. So it's about three hundred thousand data points we have to get right. So it's a big job. It's carried on over many decades. We inherit some facts and we come and update them from time to time. So once we've discovered all those facts, we take them and list them, which is basically putting them into a computer system in organized manner that we can both use them ourselves but also pass these facts on to the next group of people who come behind us. So it has to be organized, it has to be detailed, it has to be in a way that somebody twenty years down the road can kind of trace what we've done. Here's a little diagram. I think it's important to realize that discovery is in the bottom. It's well-known that this is the most time-consuming, it takes the most money going out looking. During this reassessment, we looked at every single property in the field, all ten thousand four hundred in the field. We rode by, took measurements if we needed to. With this little diagram, discovery is on the very bottom and these functions building each other. So if you have a problem in discovery, it's gonna be mis-discovered and then mis-listed, misvalued, and ultimately, mis-taxed, if that makes sense. So this is the most important thing. That's why, part of the reason the city hired an outside contractor is they didn't have enough staff to go around and look at every single property in the field, which is something we need to do. There was a lot of renovation over the last few years. We need to go out and catch that and just get our facts straight. So primarily, when we're doing this stuff, we use what's called a cost approach. There's three different ways to value a property. We use the cost approach, which is basically, we take the land value and then we think, okay, what would it cost to build this building new? And then we start subtracting things for wear and tear, things that are old, things that are new. We take off money, also economic things, things that if it's, you know, beside a dump or it has some kind of problem, we can take off money for that. We also do the income approach, how much the property would rent for. We consider that for a lot of the property, the commercial properties in the city. But at the end of the day, we, we basically build like a financial model, sort of like Zillow, an algorithm of some sort, and we test it against the sales. And we don't stop adjusting that algorithm until it's, it's considered accurate and meets all the requirements. Again, we kind of touched about this, there's three types of depreciation. Physical, that's just normal wear and tear. Functional, that's when the building doesn't function like it should. We had somebody during the Board of Equalization come in and tell us, well, they had a two-story house and there wasn't a kitchen on the first floor. You had to go downstairs into the basement. And, you know, that's where the kitchen was and we considered that abnormal and we, we considered that, you know, that was a case where we thought, okay, this person has a good point. They deserve a reduction in value, which we agreed to reduce the value because the house didn't function as it should. You know, so that's another thing that we can adjust for. And again, economic, the things that are outside the property that are influencing the value. The main point of what we're doing is we're looking at a lot of sales. Sales drive the whole process. So again, we build the financial model and we don't, can stop adjusting until all of our sales are in line. The primary way that we tell or validate our assessment is what's called a ratio study. So we, we take all of the sales that have been qualified, we take out the ones that were foreclosures and the ones that were sold to family members, and we take the sale and we took our assessment and compare the two. And when they get closer to one or one hundred percent, we know we're accurate. Sometimes it's a little high, over a hundred, sometimes it's a little low, less than a hundred. So that's just the basic parameters of how we do things. So we'll talk a little bit about how the city's assessments were when I started the job. Overall, the assessment level was seventy-one percent across the board. There was a big range in the different neighborhoods. We have the city divided up into about forty different neighborhoods. Some are old, predominantly older houses, some that are brand-new, some of them are waterfront condos. So we have them grouped mostly by zoning and then location and then also the style of houses that are all grouped together. So within those different neighborhoods, the assessment level, we had some as low as fifty-nine percent and some as high as seventy-eight percent. So there was a big range. So the, the people whose assessment level at that time was down to fifty-nine percent, they were paying less than their fair share in compared to the rest of the city. So that's why we do reassessments more frequently because we want everybody to be treated equally at the end of the day. Everyone, the, the tax burden is equally distributed. So on this slide, I know it's really hard to see, I'll try to make it a little bit bigger, but here's kind of a printout of all the sales, all the different neighborhoods in the city. And like I said, there's about forty different neighborhoods. And right there in the yellow, you see that median ratio, that's the, the assessment level. We consider the median because it's less impacted by outliers. And then over there on the next page, so you can just scroll up and down this, if you look up and down that column, you see the broad diversity amongst the neighborhoods. There we go, okay. So overall, we considered eight hundred and thirty-five sales in the city. This, this little slide is just a summary of that, showing that right there in the yellow, the median was seventy-one percent. So then, we, we did a thorough analysis of all the sales. We, we treated the ones that had been completely renovated separately. We created its own adjustment in our financial model because we didn't want to treat properties that were not renovated as though they were renovated. We had to treat them separately as their own little group. So at the end of the day, there we go. You can look up and down this column or on this, this little printout and see the results.
Which column?
Right here in the yellow. Do you see that? This is the, at the end of the reassessment, the same printout as before. And you see how there was a much broader range between fifty-eight and like seventy-eight or whatever it was. Now, right there in the yellow, you see they're all pretty close. And the standard is that none of them can be more or less than five percent of the overall. One or two percent is fine because it's, it's very hard to get it exactly lined up. So we met our standard. And this kind of explains why some parts of the city saw a bigger increase than others, if that makes sense, because all we did, we followed the sales. We didn't just come in here and add thirty percent to everybody. We followed the sales that were unique to the type of property, to the area in the city, whether or not it had been renovated. All those factors were considered. So this is a little summary slide here. Overall, when we were finished, the, the assessment level was ninety-eight percent. Our goal is a hundred percent, so we were right there at it. We had a PRD. I don't want to bore you with the details, but that's a measure of vertical equity up and down the, the price scale. It was at a hundred and two, which meet the specs. It could have been as high as a hundred and three. So at the end of the day, our financial model met all the appropriate requirements according to the state code and the IWA requirements. So moving on to commercial, that was primarily what we were, speaking of previously, was for residential properties. I think there's about seven different commercial neighborhoods in the city and there were, I think about forty sales, something like that, of commercial properties, but they were diverse across different asset classes. And when you don't have a lot of sales locally, the appropriate procedure is to go outside the city. You have to look elsewhere and that's perfectly acceptable as long as you take into account any locational differences. So obviously, if you went to like Swartpomp or, and the Beach for J. Beach Air or something like that, you could use those sales, you would just have to make sure you adjusted for your locational influences, if that makes sense. So because there were only, like, for example, there were only three industrial sales in the city during our study period, we had to look outside and that's, and that's perfectly fine. All the textbook says what you're supposed to do. So here's a little sampling of the sales. The Wendy's on Oaklawn sold, one of the retail strip centers where the Domino's is in Hopewell sold, we had a gas station, the, the Flagstaff Car Wash on Ashland Street sold, two of the hotels sold, we had a handful of retail buildings, a handful of mixed-use buildings in the downtown area. So bottom line is, we did develop a model, but it was augmented by sales from outside the city and that was appropriate, again, because there was only a handful, handful of sales. So when you're talking about reviewing and appealing, there's a two-step process. First off is an informal appeal process. That's where citizens just come in and talk to the assessor's office. We usually go over the discovery facts, maybe bedrooms and remember bathrooms, is there anything wrong with the property? Do you have any condition-related issues that we need to know about? And we usually adjust those right then and there if we can come to some sort of agreement. That's just an informal process. There were about two hundred and fifty people who engaged us for that process, which is about two and a half percent of the total parcels, and that's considered a low number. I know that sounds like a lot, but in, in the big, you know, the grand scheme of things, two and a half percent, it wasn't an overwhelming amount. The second step is called the Board of Equalization. Their results, once their hearings are finished, they are final. There's really nothing that can be done at this point other than correcting an error, a factual error, which you can do at any time. So some quick facts about the Board of Equalization. They are a quasi-judicial board. They're made up of citizens who actually have to own property in the city. They get appointed by the local circuit court. They're trained by the state and the, the codes and the ways of doing things. They are independent of the assessor's office and they can overrule us. It's in the city code where we just serve as their clerk. We basically, you know, answer questions and, and things like that. There's a guideline in the code for Board of Equalization members that at least thirty percent of them need to have some sort of background in law, real estate, banking, finance, or development. We actually had more than that. We had at least fifty percent. We had one person who was a Realtor, Ms. Glass, so I think she's been a Realtor for like forty years, lots of experience. We also had another member who was a mortgage underwriter for SunTrust. You know, she'd seen lots of appraisals and was familiar with property. So our board was trained by the state and more than qualified. Ultimately, the board, the burden of convincing them relies upon the taxpayer. The state code says that the assessor's office enjoys what's called the presumption of correctness. So we go in there, we obviously, you know, we don't take things to this board unless we think we're, we're right. You know, we don't waste a citizen's time. We've looked at it ourselves, but it's up to them to convince those people who are independent, who are well-qualified and trained by the state, that something needs to be changed. We had less than one percent of all the parcels were appealed to the Board of Equalization. I think we had about eighty-one or eighty-two. There were about fifty unique property owners who came and between ten and fifteen properties were actually changed. And it, I think it was about five hundred and five thousand dollars in assessed value or about fifty-seven hundred dollars in actual tax dollars that was changed as a result of that Board of Equalization. This slide is just, there it is in black and white. It's essential that the board recognized it in all cases before it. There's a presumption of correctness and the burden of proof is on the property owner. So during these hearings, we do, you know, they talk a little bit, then we talk a little bit, and then just leave it to the board they've helped. This is a slide, just the thirty percent of the members. They need to have some sort of background and again, our board was well-qualified. We had, we needed, like, basically, one out of three, we had two out of four, so. Again, this is just showing that, um, this is a letter from, I guess, the judge saying that they were qualified, they had been trained by the state, these folks here who serve on our board. I think that's more or less it. I did want to say one other thing. I know Hopewell, I grew up in Ashland, and I started doing fee appraisals or bank appraisals in Hopewell about two thousand five, two thousand six. So I think some people thought, well, this guy just came in from the mountains, he doesn't know what he's doing, but that wasn't the case at all. Like I said, I grew up in Ashland and I've done, I don't know how many, but a lot of fee appraisals for banks in Hopewell. And before I came here, I was actually the assessor over in Prince George. So I knew tri-city area, you know, I was very well-qualified, basically. But I would like to turn it over to- But I would like to turn it over to Ms. Born, who will speak a little bit about the office and the goals.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of council. Yep, I am short. Politically challenged. Is that a little bit better? Thank you.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of council. My name is Terry Born, and I am the newly hired City of Hopewell Real Estate Assessor. Thank you for letting me speak briefly this evening. First, I would like to thank our interim assessor, Jason Cowan, for all of his hard work, bringing our assessment values in line with the required state mandated, mandated hundred percent of fair market value. Jason worked very hard. He came to the City of Hopewell at a time when the market had been very overheated, and he had to increase the values quite a bit from the last reassessment. And he did a very good job. As I move forward with the City of Hopewell Real Estate Assessment Office, with your help and support, I plan to fully staff the office with two more people, based on sound advice that we received from an IWA consultant. We'll be moving forward, moving toward annual reassessments as we improve the office with the appropriate tools, technology, and staffing. We will be moving toward improved communication and public relations with the City of Hopewell citizens by improving our webpage and participation in the Citizens Academy. Further, I hope to strive for excellence and qualify us for the IWA's CEAA, which is the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment and Administration Award, which only six localities in Virginia have received, two of which are the City of Petersburg and the County of Prince George. I look forward to serving the citizens of the City of Hopewell, our council members, and City of Hopewell staff. And I would like to thank all of you for letting me come in tonight and introduce myself. And I'm going to now hand it back over to Jason Cowan. Thank you.
So I think more or less concludes what I had to say, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you want to discuss anything.
Okay. First slide that I have on is Counselor Pelham.
Are the programs that offer relief, do you know how we alert our citizens about those programs?
I do not. They are administered by the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, because they require review of individuals' income and assets. And they're already trained in doing that, because they help with the state taxes and things like that. So I do not know how they're being advertised currently, unfortunately.
Yeah. Those are things that do like veterans, or older people.
Yeah. I mean, whenever I'm speaking with somebody, you know, during the appeal process, I usually try to mention that to them. And I walked over a couple of them to the commissioners to mention it to them. That's how I promote it.
And when you did your comparisons far out in distance from, that you couldn't do for like, commercial sales, industry sales, how far out did you actually go? I understand you went to Williamsburg and Fredericksburg, and I would think that Williamsburg, historic, Hopewell, ordinary. How could you, so you adjusted the prices therein somehow, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So it depends on the type of property. It would vary how far I went. Some of them, I went nationwide. So the apartments, yeah, the apartments, because you, at the end of the day, we have to do what's called evidence-based valuation. So if you don't have evidence, if you don't have sales, the only reasonable conclusion is that you did it wrong, right? So you have to have something. So for the apartments, I searched nationwide. And when you're developing an appraisal, this was actually in here, but I thought we were pressed for time, but the definition of an appraisal is a number, a certain number, a number relative to another number, or a range of numbers. So in that particular, I think there was a gentleman who took it adverse, that I used sales from Williamsburg, but that was a sampling of industrial properties from across Virginia, where I could look at the median of the sales set and say that the median, and I think in that case was like a hundred dollars a square foot, and the property in question was like fifty or sixty dollars per square foot. And this property had some issues with it, as far as zoning and some different problems, because it was an industrial building, but not industrial zoning. So in that particular comparison, I was able to say, well, the median is like a hundred dollars a square foot, you're at like fifty or sixty, you're less than this range, so you're appropriate, if that makes sense. So you can compare groups of sales, or you can do direct sales comparisons. No place in the country does direct sales comparisons, except for California, where they do a fully-developed appraisal for every single property. And the only reason they do that in California is because once it's set, it never changes until the property's sold. Because it just takes like, it takes about four hours for every house to do a fully-developed sales comparison approach, and pick particular sales for this particular property. And it would just take way too long, you'd have to have an army of appraisers. So that's why we developed that algorithm, sort of like Zillow, for most of the properties. Except for the commercial ones, you can spend a little bit more time, because out of the ten thousand four hundred, we may have seven or eight hundred commercial properties in Hopewell. So you can spend a little bit more time, but you're also not fully developing a sales comparison approach. Hopefully, that answers your question.
One other question. You said there were two hundred and fifty people who were concerned about the assessments, but the Board of Equalization only reviewed eighty cases. What happened to the other cases?
Sure. Okay, so there was a two-step process. About two hundred and fifty came in for the initial informal reviews.
Did you settle them?
Yeah. We settled, we settled some of them. I don't know, I don't have the stats, but I think it was about forty percent, I thought the people had a case. And most of those were discovery problems, where they come in, they say they've got mold in their basement, or they have some property condition.
Don't mention mold, please.
Yeah. They had something that we were not aware of. So then, okay, you know, we trust you, they brought, some people brought in pictures of the garage, or whatever. Then we discussed that, okay, you have a point, we'll adjust it. So that was the first step. And then about eighty or so people went to the Board of Equalization.
I got you. Okay, good, great. Thank you for the presentation.
All right. Counselor Joyner?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. It was really very informative. I have a little bit of question about, I think, a lot of the, my concerns just relate to the processes, the timing, the timelines, and perhaps has to do with a lot of the office structure. And our new assessor seems to have addressed that. Now, in the future, maybe this is a question to you, will these be City of Hopewell employees? Or are these going to be contract employees? Currently, they're mostly contract employees, or have been up until this point, in the assessor's office. Will we be hiring City of Hopewell employees?
So my goal is to hire full-time employees.
Okay. All right. That answers my question.
Are they already authorized on the books?
So one of them is a replacement staff person.
The other one.
That we lost. And the second one is, I'm working on the approval process.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. As I said, I think some of the, some of the angst with this whole process had to do with how late the Board of Equalization was pulled together. And of course, you had to ask for an extension, that kind of thing. So I hope that in the future, and obviously, if you're going for the certification, I'm sure a lot of these things will be addressed moving forward.
So this is where I need your all's help, okay? We have a process here at the city where people fill out an application to be on one of our boards. And, you know, sometimes we have people who do it, or sometimes we don't have enough people who want to do it. And then we end up having to call around and see if there's anybody who might be able to. I would like to ask you all to please keep your ears open, you know? And I know in other low-counties, recommendations, or sometimes your approach by people who need or would like a little more education on how the process works, well, sitting on a Board of Equalization is actually good. Once they go through the process of being taught by the Department of Taxation and read through the manual, they start to have a better understanding of how the process works. I spent five years at the Department of Taxation teaching people this manual, and it's a very thorough manual.
Yes, I've read it. It is.
So please keep your ears open. We're looking for your, you do not get to appoint them. It is done by the circuit court judge, which is a good thing. But we're always looking for people who have qualifications, because they do still have to have the qualifications to do this. And that means experience as a real estate person, legal, financial, those kinds of things. And it's all spelled out in the code of Virginia, what those qualifications are. Okay? Does that help?
That helps a great deal, very much. I have several, I have some constituents that have, you know, have sent me some information that I will take up with you individually. I know we passed through this, you know, the, you know, the Board of Equalization hearings, but nonetheless, I will bring some issues to you.
They still need to fill out the application.
Understand.
And go through the process.
Understand.
But we don't want to be scrambling for people.
Right, I understand. But these are, these are, these are process issues, okay? Some inconsistencies that have been seen over neighborhoods. I will be bringing those, I'll call and set up an appointment with you. Also had a question about Board of Equalization hearings. Are there no minutes taken for those BOE hearings?
Yes, there are.
There are minutes, okay? Are they available now?
Yes, they are.
Or?
I actually had a constituent who requested them, and they've been sent to that person already.
They have, okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. This has been very informative. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you send them also to the city court, so she can be included in the agenda? The minutes should be all met.
So all Board of Equalization hearings are open to the public? And they're advertised, similar to what's done for you all? The minutes are taken, and they are public, if anybody's interested in them.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, so the clerk normally gets them, and then she publishes them well in the agenda, so that makes it even more public availability.
Okay. If you'd like to do it that way, I, you know, what I'd like to propose is that, and actually, I can do both. I'd like to propose, as part of beefing up my website, that I actually put the minutes out on the website.
Yes.
Okay? For the Board of Equalization. And put them out there also, so that they are public, too.
So they'll be in two spots, yours and hers.
Sure.
One more question, the gentleman, may I, Mr. Mayor? Did you, did you have a chance to look at the past assessments, like, five years? And were they historically seem like pretty low? And is this time, because they came, that they were going to increase anyway, because the assessments increased nationally, correct? But it seemed like Hopewell's assessments were very low in the past. And is this a case, maybe just catching up with everybody, and everybody was shocked because they had such high assessments, because somehow, they were not as calculated as they maybe should have been?
Yes. The only thing that it was, like, pretty obvious to me was the apartments. And actually, I have some of them here, in case we want to talk about that. But most of them hadn't changed since 2015. They hadn't increased, they hadn't been increased for eight years. So some of the apartments doubled or more than doubled, because, you know, the rents have gone up, especially through COVID, and then also, the cap rates were down, which makes the value go up. So those were under-assessed. I can say that pretty well.
Across the board.
Across the board, yes, ma'am. Some of the industrial properties also hadn't changed for eight years. They were suspect. I can't say definitively that they were under-assessed, because it wasn't my job to look in the past, you know, so I didn't spend a lot of my time looking into the past. But when I saw the apartments, and I saw they hadn't changed, I just knew, like, I just had in my spirit, I was like, oh, gosh. These people got, and you see, I'm glad you brought this up, because doing annual assessments are better for everybody. They're better for the city, better for the taxpayers. So when you see, like, no one gets this thirty percent jump, it's
Right.
It's gradual. Three, four, five percent over time. It's better that way. Also, if you look back to that slide where I was talking about the different varying assessment levels across the city, some were like in the fifties, and some were still hovering around eighties. That disparity, where people are way under-assessed, that gets fixed faster. It's not two years, it's just one year. So that disparity, because where, I live up near Virginia Tech, in Blacksburg, they're always under-assessed. Like, you know, I live in the rural part of the county, my assessment level might be eighty percent. In Blacksburg, because it's right there at tech, and all that, it's a hot market, always, they're like in the sixties, you know? So they never pay their fair share, because they're, up there, they only reassess every four years.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's why I think doing the annual reassessment makes sense. I think that's her plan into the future. And there's, I'll just talk to you really quickly. Yeah, non-revenue reasons. These are non-revenue reasons for doing it, not, it's not a money thing. Number one, the Board of Equalization meets more frequently, right? So you have some people who are, you know, when you don't see each other, you're aboard. Imagine if you didn't see each other once every two years, right? You don't build that camaraderie, and the friendships and things like that over time. That's number one. It's a gradual increase. I think we kind of hit them all. Just discrepancies get fixed faster. If there's errors, if we just missed the boat, then we wait one year, and we can just do it, we can fix it then. So those are the reasons why annual reassessment makes sense for everybody.
And the Board of Equalization on the apartments, did anyone get, that was a part, a part of the devaluation of some of the properties, was it, did it involve the apartments complexes?
Yeah. There were maybe eight, seven or eight, something like that, that went to the Board of Equalization, yep.
Okay. I mean, and they were reduced, or?
None of them were reduced.
Okay.
Not one. Yeah.
Okay.
Because I guess those people weren't convinced they needed to be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mayor Prater, I have my hand up.
Okay.
Just want to touch on one thing. I heard Counselor Pelham talk about the minutes, and I kind of heard a response, but I didn't hear all of it in full. Just want to make sure it's reiterated to staff that it's a requirement that the city clerk does all announcements for our boards. So the notification must go through her office moving forward, to announce the meetings of the Board of Equalization. And the minutes must be presented to her to put into our packets. I think I heard a response, like, I like to have a suggestion or something to that nature, that's fine, but it's required to submit to the clerk. And I believe I met with Brittany and talked about getting the minutes from our boards and commissions that haven't been compliant with that. So at the end of this meeting, staff needs to send those minutes over to her, to include in our next agenda packet. And we could talk with the city manager, I know she's on the line, about if it'd be permissible for the minutes to be added to another section on our website, as opposed to where all of our other boards and commissionments should be housed. I think it's a question of counsel and manager to discuss how we want to proceed in that matter. But just want to make sure we have clarification that all notifications must go through the clerk, and the minutes must be presented to the clerk, and whatever's been done that now needs to be sent over to her. Then also, just to clarification in regards to how often the Board of Equalization meets, things of that effect, I think I heard a suggestion, I could have, again, I could be wrong, to have the board meet more frequently. I would, if I heard that correctly, I would just caution against making any adjustments to how the board meets until we talk to the attorney, and make sure that our ordinances and our resolutions in regards to how this board performs is updated and cleared through council appropriately, to make sure that we have that updated in our clerk's office as well, in terms of those records. So I'd defer to see attorney, if I heard So I'd defer to the city attorney, if I heard that correctly, to make sure that staff meet with you to give that to council, and for us to make a determination on that. And Mayor Pardon, did I hear any of that incorrectly?
No, that's probably, yeah, that's pretty much what we heard.
Okay, yeah, so I'd defer to the city attorney to check up on any suggestions staff would like to make in regards to the board and how often it meets, and then I defer to the clerk to capture those minutes, thank you for that.
All right. Is there any other lights, or anyone else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go into our regular close, or, excuse me, regular meeting. And this will be our call to order, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Mayor Pardon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
I think you might be muted.
I, I said here.
Okay.
Councilor Denton?
Here.
Councilor Pellon?
Here.
Councilor Holloway?
Here.
Councilor Joyner?
Here.
Okay. Before we start our meeting, as many of you all know, yesterday was the anniversary of 9/11. And so, I'd like to ask for each and every one of you to please rise for a moment of silence, so we can honor the nearly 3,000 individuals that lost their lives. Thank you. All right, this time, will you please remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Danny Tucker, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag by Vice Mayor Gore?
Good evening, members of the city council. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for your presence over all the world, and we thank you, dear Lord, for your presence over the city of Hopewell. We pray, dear Father, that we will work together with a spirit of unity, a spirit of honesty, and a spirit of working together, Lord. Dear Lord, we pray your continued blessings over our city officials and our city workers, Lord, our fire department, our police department, our teachers, Lord, and our school board, and especially our board of, of, of city council. Dear Lord, we just pray that we will do the work of government in a way that will bring glory and honor to your name. Help us, oh Lord, to do your will. We praise you in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, at this time, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Holloway, seconded by Councilor Pellon. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pellon?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Denton, seconded by Councilor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pellon?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, at this time, we're moving into our information presentation section. Our first one is the police report by Chief Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm here to present the September crime report. Beginning with a crime summary, before violent crime for the, through August the 27th, murder rate, robbery, aggravated assault. I'm pleased to announce that we have a 30% decrease in violent crime. As far as the property crime, arson, burglary, law enforcement, motor vehicle theft, at this time, we have a minus 19% decrease in property crime. For a total, major crime decrease is minus 21% at this time period. Moving on to the next slide, suspected opiate overdoses. For the, for 2023, 2023, we've had 17 so far this year, compared to our, next highest was 13 in 2021. For our fatal, our non-fatal, we've had 61 so far this year, compared to 2020, where we was tied with 61 as well. And grand total for this time period in 2023 is a total of 78 suspected opiate overdoses. Moving on to our next slide, shots fired through August the 31st. We, from 2023 so far this year, we've had 44. This is a three-year low compared to back in 2020, where we had 47. In 2019, we all know that as the COVID was going around, we had a lowest of 30 back in 2019. Moving to the next slide, our upcoming events. On September the 21st, it's National Night Out. Kickoff party will be here at police headquarters. The community engagement team will be cook, will be doing a cooking out, and we have invited the neighborhood watch groups and other community partners. And this will be the last get out and talk cookout for 2023. And this event will be held at the police building. And the goal is to raise awareness about National Night Out, and gain more neighborhood watch groups in the city. And the event time is from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. On September the 23rd, we have our bass fishing tournament for Special Olympics. The event will be held at the Hopewell Marina, and the times is from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And on September the 30th, the police department will be partnering with the Hopewell Sheriff's Department to sponsor a bike radio, bike rodeo, and will, it'll be held at the rear of the Hopewell courthouse in the parking lot. And the times are from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And October the 3rd, 2023, will be our citywide National Night Out. The time is from 6:00 PM to 8 o'clock PM. That's October the 3rd, 2023. And lastly, on October the 28th, 2023, we have our drug takeback. And this also will be held at police headquarters, along, also at the Tri-City Hospital for drop-off locations. And the time for this will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Our technology successes from, we started February the 26th of 2023 through August the 31st, we've identified 12 stolen vehicles that we recovered. One stolen firearm from a passenger in a stolen vehicle. One Catalytic converter theft was arrested. And it's also has assisted us in the arrest in a homicide investigation. And also has assisted us in a case solved in a robbery investigation. And lastly, it also has assisted us in a hit and run investigation, where we was able to solve the case. And looking to the future, additional technology, we continue to expand current technologies to key areas in the city. And we have the 10 sites that we wanted operational in addition to the ones that were, we had already originally had. The status of the current technology, we're 100% in operation. The Real Time Crime Center, we working on a, working on approval of a downtown location. And we're still researching available grants, funding, and budgeting costs to deal with staff and equipment. This concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, are there any questions, Councilor Pellon?
What do you need a downtown location in for? I missed something.
The Real Time Crime Center.
Okay, okay. And also, how, you, do you work with the, the program, what's it called? Shield, Blue Shield or something?
Are you talking about Operation Ceasefire?
Yes, how is that going?
Yes, ma'am, we, it's a great partnership. We work together, we meet monthly, I can't, it is, is a great partnership. It is doing great to help the citizen and, and the community to reduce Yes, ma'am, it's working good.
It is something that y'all are being successful with the kids that you're working with.
Yes, also, that's the Good to Great Program.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilor Joyner?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, that the department has received some very positive publicity recently about exactly what Councilor Pellon was saying, the Good to Great Program. It was biz sense, it was enrichment biz sense, and I think it got some press otherwise. So I wanted to say thank you and congratulations.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
I have one question. I know you're still working through, you know, the permitting process for the 10 additional technologies that we're deploying across the city. Do you have a date of when those 10 will be up and running?
Well, the, the, the first report was giving out, the 10 additional operational goals were completed. I got a email since then, there was two additional sites that needed some more work to be done.
Okay.
So it's two sites left.
Okay, so two out of the 10?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
All right, is there any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. All right, next presentation is the physical turnaround report by Mr. Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, and members of city council. I'm glad to be back here again, and we will be at every city council meeting for the next several months.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to thank the, the city manager and all of the city staff. They have been tremendous in terms of their availability to us, their availability in providing all of the information that we've requested of them over the last several weeks. And so the onboarding process has gone very well. And kudos to the, the city, the city manager, as well as to the city staff. I'd like to make one brief comment, and that is, for someone who studies crime issued in urban cities across the US, including my, and having served as a co-chair of the DC Crime Commission, I think the report that you all have received tonight, that I just heard from the police chief, is very uplifting, given the fact, given what is happening in urban communities all across the US. And that's my one, my only editorial comment tonight.
Thank you.
We have, we have, we have established a program management office just down the street from City Hall. Over the last few days, we've had formal initial exploratory leadership meetings with all of the city staff. We set out a detailed document and meeting request list to all of, all of the city staff, including the city manager. We set up a Dropbox, which has a repository of all of the information and data that we need to, that's needed to complete our report. We've completed individual visioning meetings with all members of the city council, and I want to thank you all for being available to us. All 100% success in that regard. And I might also add that the candor from which we, from those interviews with city council has been tremendously helpful as we move forward as well. We have, we've had extensive meetings with every agency of the city government that impacts the financial operations of the city, including the, the office of the city treasurer, the external auditors whom will you, with whom you will hear from tonight, given their report. I might add that with regard to the past audits and correcting the audits over the, which is one of our major charges, we will make sure that, we will complete that task. I'm, I'm not 99% sure, I'm 100% sure, in that regard, given the team that we have, and given the discussion that we've had just a few days ago with the external audit team. What we, what we have to make sure along the way is that we have the, the resources within, within the city to provide us with the information that we need, so that we can be successful. Again, we have onboarded all of our team. We have some important meetings coming up, not just internally with the city, but we also have meetings coming up with the owners of the Beacon Theater, Fire and Emergence, Fire and EMS, the school system, the IT, city clerk, and finance staff. So there are a series of other meetings that we will be conducting. One of the issues that we've heard is that there is a, an issue within the, between the city, and also with regard to our work that we are proceeding with, with regard to the industry, our industrial major employers in the city. And we expect to, well, we are reaching out to the industry as well. So we'd like to see, we'd like to know what everyone's issues are as we proceed with the work that we're involved and engaged in. We will have a lot more to report at our next meeting. We have a team that will be, I would say, descending on the city staff next week. Some members of our team will be coming in from Phoenix, Arizona, Albuquerque, and different other locations, including the local area. When I say local area, I mean DC and Virginia. But I will say that the, if we continue with the cooperation that we've had thus far, and the information that we're receiving from the city administration and the leadership from the city manager, you know, we are, I wouldn't say that we're excited, but I'd say that we are confident that we're going to complete this engagement successfully. And I think most people who know how I operate, if you don't cooperate, we're going to take it to either the city manager, and if we don't get the information we need there, then we're going to keep moving until we, we receive the, what we need. But I hope that the city manager recovers well. I just say that she's been a joy to work with in terms of providing us access to not only the city's team, but in terms of all of the information that we need to be successful in this engagement. Happy to respond to any questions that you all might have.
All right, does anyone have any questions, Councilor Pellon?
Yes, so in your interviews, does anything stand out that's maybe, I don't know, abnormal, normal, beyond normal?
There, is there anything that stands out?
You've been here for three weeks, right?
Yeah, I think the one, two thing that stands out is that, uh, we have to.
Corporates.
I mean, the, the key thing that stands out is the excellent cooperation we're getting from the City Treasurer, and I think that that is one of the critical issues in which we will, I said, if we are prioritizing our deep dive is working with the City Treasurer and her team to give her the support that she needs to be successful because she's responsible for collecting all of our money, right? And so, we need those dollars. And so, the City Clerk, the City, uh, Treasurer is a very key position as we move forward. Uh, and then, I would say, one of the things that we have to look at, how we're organized to be successful, right? Uh, because the way I see us now, and this is something I may have mentioned, I hope I've mentioned it to the City Manager, I don't want her to hear this for the first time, and that is, the way I see the way we're organized is that we have an audit department, of auditors, and what we need is a finance department. And we, as we work through this, we, we have to look at how we're organized, uh, because in our finance department, and I think Michael Terry, I, I hope he agrees with me, we have a lot of, um, auditors, and rightfully so, because of the back audits. But we have to organize this City a little bit differently to have a finance department. We have key positions that are being recruited. We need an assistant City Manager. We would also have to look organizationally as to whether we want to create a separate budget office. So, those are the things that organizationally, from our experience in other municipalities, we have to look at how we're organized internally to be successful long-term.
Does that mean that, uh, cause some of the finance people in, in the wastewater, some in Police Department, cause the Finance Department has people divved out to different departments, correct? You don't see that in other cities? Like, I think there.
What do you mean?
There's a financial representative that works with the sewer, wastewater people. Then I think there's a finance person that does something at the Police Department, correct? And may, where else, I don't know what other departments ever find, any other department? I mean, I, I'm in the military, I'm used to consolidating finance, finance.
Oh, no, no. No, what I meant is, what, what you have in, in a lot of municipalities, you have finance individuals in different agencies.
You do.
But at the end of the day, it's the mothership that controls.
Right. Yes, and that doesn't happen.
And that is the Finance Department and the Director of Finance.
Has control over that person regardless of where his physical body or hers is. Correct.
I will tell you one thing, one of the meetings we had today was very uplifting, and that was the meeting that we, you know, had with the Finance Department, with the City Treasurer, uh, with the City Assessor.
Uh-huh.
As well as with the Commissioner of Robina. Yeah. That was a very uplifting meeting. Uh, I came out of that meeting, although concerned when I walked into the meeting, but just in all of the presentation and the candidate that, that were, uh, discussed in that meeting and the plan that we have going forward and working with those executives, it was a very uplifting meeting. So, I, I don't know how we got to where we are, but our goal is to get us out of where we are and so that we can move forward over the next few months.
And so, your confidence in defining that you're gonna be a hundred percent successful, you define success by?
Well, the way I define.
I, I define success.
Well, the way I define success is that everyone who are being paid to perform.
Your job.
That they perform at ninety-nine point nine percent.
Okay.
And that their loyalty to performing is the City's first, not the individual first.
Okay.
And that if anyone stands in the way, then they have a responsibility to work with the City Manager to move those individuals aside. You know, one of the messages that we delivered today is, we have a team of, you know, individuals coming into town on Monday to work with the, uh, employees who are engaged and involved with the munis system, because everywhere we hear, every, every place we touch is an issue with munis.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're bringing a team in to train, to review the system that we have, and that the message that was delivered today is that we're gonna expend these resources, we're gonna bring these experts in, we're going to work with the City's team, but that we expect that we're, well, I know we're gonna have full cooperation, but one of the realities is that if we have team members or employees who, for some reason, just don't get it, then we have to move them aside. Because, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's just the way the world works. I mean, it's not that everyone can be technology.
Proficient.
Experts.
Yeah.
But, you know, we wanna be sensitive, but if someone cannot perform, then we would expect that those individuals would be set aside, find another location where they can be successful in the, in the government. But we have to have individuals who can perform at a high level, given the investment that's being made to make the City better.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. And our last, uh, presentation tonight will be on the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit Report, uh, from Robinson Farmer Cox.
I don't like my famous questions without reviewing it. Okay. Thank you. He got two.
Yeah, we have, we have PowerPoint just in case they.
Okay. I'll pass those out. Give me those. Give me all of them. Give me all of them.
Well, while we're waiting for, uh, them to come, since we only have one hour left in our, uh, meeting, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish R4?
Some notes.
All right. I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Y'all gonna have to come back.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Lord?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
No.
Can she see this online?
Okay.
Oh, no.
The specifications, if she can't see it online.
Yes.
She has to be able to see it online. Cause it's not for you. So, it has to be available to all citizens, including online. You asked to inform me.
Point of information, since this was not given a four-year prior, and it's just being distributed tonight, it has to be available to all citizens, which they have it up there. Is this being viewed online? Is it, is this, are the citizens able to see this online, including the Vice Mayor?
Um, I'm not sure that this video presentation can be seen by people who are dialing in. However, in compliance with it being available to citizens, I think, is there a copy, Madam Clerk?
Well, we're talking about online, cause the.
I understand. Um, online, it could possibly be posted on our website, but, um, in order to comply with the folks that are here, I just wanted to make sure that there was a copy of the materials at the door.
No.
If not, I can, I can relinquish my copy. That's fine. But as far as online, I don't believe that folks that are listening in can see the, um, PowerPoint.
So, then, would it be appropriate then, cause I, I thought the understanding that I got from the office was that it has to be available to all citizens?
It has to be publicly distributed to citizens, and so part of that public distribution can be a, a copy being placed at the door.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure we were in line.
Yes, I understand. And I can, I can put my copy at the door.
Well, my question is, is it reasonable to, will y'all to come back and review after we review?
First of all, uh, Michael Terry, Finance Director, um, I apologize that we haven't had an opportunity to, um, bring everybody up to speed, but what this process is, is a part of the professional requirements of him communicating the audit to council, that if there's a need for it to come back, that's, that's understandable, we can have, make that happen. But this just simply is presenting the close-out. If we were in a normal fiscal year, let's say end of 2023, December, uh, the auditor would come and present his communications, which he's required to do, to council, pass out the report, and then if there's a desire to have a follow-up workshop or something, uh, in January or February, that will happen. So, this is just a process that has to occur with the ongoing process.
But it doesn't know, when it has to occur, it's when council has enough time to go through the audit to see if they have any questions, right?
Yeah, well, he's gonna present some of the high points, and you can ask questions.
That's his high point, she might not be mine.
That's, that's true.
That's my point.
But you're always open to, to have a work session subsequent to today.
Well, and free, y'all coming back free? Cause y'all, you know, y'all charged for everything.
Uh, coming to, uh, presentations are included in our calls.
Okay, in the, in the, uh, in the initial contract presentation.
Yeah, that, that's built into the fee.
So, you will come back after this, okay? Right?
We want you to come back. Yes.
I think.
Yes, I can come back.
All right. Go ahead.
Would you still like me to do the presentation now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, thanks for having me here this, uh, evening. My name is, uh, David Foley. Uh, I'm a partner with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, and, uh, we performed, uh, the audit for, uh, City's FYI, uh, 2019. Um, I've completed that, so I'm here, uh, to present, uh, the results of that, uh, to you all. Um, so, I've got, um, a PowerPoint presentation to go through, um, the main points of the audit, um, just an overview, um, of the presentation this evening. Uh, first start with an introduction, uh, who the, introduce our firm, who I am, um, and then, uh, go over the scope of work that's included in the audit that we do for the City, um, and then go through, um, some required communications, um, auditing standards require that we communicate certain things to you all at the end of an audit, so we do so, um, with these, uh, communications here. And then, uh, end with the, um, the audit results, uh, for FYI 19. So, introduction, um, again, my name is, uh, David Foley. Uh, I'm a partner, uh, with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, and I was a partner in charge and audit manager for the, um, City's, uh, FYI, um, 19 audit. Um, my background, um, I have over, uh, twenty-two years of experience in managing and auditing, uh, local governments. Um, I started right out of, uh, college with the firm, actually interned with the firm, um, and have been with, um, them ever since. So, for the past twenty-two, uh, years, this is what I do, um, auditing, uh, local governments. Um, my duties, again, I have overall responsibility for the audit coordination, uh, with staff, uh, supervising staff as well as, um, you know, I, uh, was part of the, um, audit process, uh, and involved, uh, heavily in the audit process, uh, personally. Um, a little bit of a brief background of, of our firm, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, uh, we've been serving local government since, uh, nineteen fifty-three. Um, approximately seventy-five percent of, um, our practice is devoted to, uh, local governments, um, and authorities, boards and commissions, uh, throughout the, the Commonwealth. Um, we have six offices, uh, throughout the Commonwealth, Office of Blacksburg, uh, Charlottesville, Charlottesville's the opposite, um, the audit team was out of, um, Fredericksburg, Louisa, Richmond, and Stanton. So, we're spread out, um, amongst the Commonwealth, uh, so that we can serve the, the many, uh, localities, uh, in Virginia. Now, we have approximately ninety-five professionals and support staff that are dedicated specifically to governmental auditing, and I think we estimate we have over a hundred thousand, uh, governmental audit hours logged each year. So, you know, again, governmental auditing is what our, uh, specialty is. That's mainly what we, we do as a firm. Um, so that's just a brief, uh, background of myself and, and the firm.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
I just got a text message, uh, saying that we didn't finish our meeting, or excuse me, our motion to extend the meeting, so I'm just gonna ask her to do a quick, uh, redo of the roll call.
Okay. Uh, what is?
What is the, can you restate?
It's to extend the meeting all the way through R4. Roll call.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lord?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pellum?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Uh, yes.
And Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, the scope of, of work that we do, um, for the City is part of the, the, um, financial audit. Um, one is, you know, audit of the numbers that are in the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report. Um, the other two items, uh, we do, um, in accordance with, uh, governmental auditing standards. Um, one is, uh, we, uh, look at the internal controls that the City has over its, uh, uh, financial reporting. Um, and so, in addition to just looking at the numbers themselves, we look at the, the in, internal controls, um, the City has over its, uh, financial reporting. And then, the third, um, piece of the audit is the, um, basically the federal compliance audit that's done in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Um, this year, you'll see, included in the annual comprehensive financial report, um, previously, in previous years for the City, um, it just included the, the annual, audited annual financial report, um, and then the internal, the report on internal controls over financial reporting. And then, historically, a separate report was issued over, um, for the Uniform Guidance Audit. This year, in nineteen, it's all together in, in one document. Um, and that's typically how we normally, when we're issuing, um, uh, annual, uh, comprehensive financial reports, we like to have all of it in, in one space, uh, in, in one document. And so, in moving forward, just with nineteen, we would like to, um, move, have that, uh, same, uh, practice as well. That way, once the audit's done, everything's right there, and it's not, here's one piece of it, and here's another piece later. Um, so again, that's new, uh, for the City to have in their, um, annual comprehensive financial report is the, um, Uniform Guidance, the federal compliance, uh, piece. Um, some, uh, required communications, uh, again, auditing standards, uh, require that we make, uh, certain communications to you all at the end of an audit, um, so like to go, uh, through, uh, these with you all now. Um, some, uh, significant accounting policies, um, management is responsible, uh, for the selection and appropriate use of accounting policies. Um, the significant accounting policies that the City uses to prepare its financial statements are, um, listed in the, um, Note One to the financial statements that are included in the annual, uh, report. And, um, also that the, uh, financial statement disclosure, disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. Um, some communications related to significant estimates, um, you know, significant estimates are an integral part of preparing the financial statements. Um, some of the more significant estimates that are, um, included. Some of the more significant estimates that are included in the annual comprehensive financial report are the depreciable lives of capital assets, which use, which is used to record depreciation expense. The other two significant estimates are related to the net pension liability and net OPEB liability that's included in the the financial statements. These are estimates as well. These are derived and actuary actually goes through and prepares these estimates. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing the audit and completing the audit. If we had any difficulties in in dealing with management, we'd have to communicate those to you all. Corrected or uncorrected misstatements. There were no uncorrected misstatements noted. Disagreements with management. We did not have any disagreements with management in terms of accounting treatments or audit procedures performed. Again, if we had any disagreements, we would have to disclose those to you all. And then lastly, consultations with other accountants. To to our knowledge, management does not consult with any other accountants related to auditing and other matters, i.e. in terms of second opinion shopping. Again, these are just the required communications that we have to make to you all. So now we'll go over the the audit results. So as before, in the scope of the work, I noted there was basically three main pieces to the audit. The audit of the financial statements, the internal controls, and then the then the federal compliance. So included in the annual comprehensive report that you all have, there's three different reports from us that communicate the results of the audit. The first is our independent auditors' report. And in this report is where we do issue the opinion on the financial statements. And similar to two thousand eighteen, in two thousand nineteen, we have issued a disclaimer of an opinion, meaning we were not able to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence to provide a basis for an audit opinion in accordance with, we do not, are not able to express an opinion on the financial statements. So what's the basis for that disclaimer? Again, similar to two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, there were material differences between the bank reconciliation performed, prepared by the Treasurer's Office and what was recorded in the city and school board's adjusted general ledger and financial statements. And so we were not able to get the city and school board and Treasurer's Office not even provide sufficient support to rectify those discrepancies. And again, I I talked about this last time during the two thousand eighteen presentation, but when you have an issue with cash, cash is basically the backbone to the to the financial trend, to your financial statements. That's basically the 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 building block. Everything else builds on top of that. You've got your accruals, your capital assets, all that stuff. Well, that's still all based off of cash transactions. So I think last time I correlated to if you build a building, as you're building the building, you have to have a sturdy foundation. And if you don't have a sturdy foundation, everything that's put on top of it can fall down. So if you don't have, if if we don't have that basis for the just the cash transactions, then it's, you know, everything that's built on top of it, you know, it's, you can't support it. So again, there was the issues with cash. And then also, that's been an issue since, I believe, two thousand fifteen, issues related to the enterprise funds as far as having, supporting, being able to support receivables, revenues and revenues that are recorded in the enterprise's financial statements. So again, this was an issue for two thousand nineteen. So that's the, that was the 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 opinion that was issued on the in the Independent Auditor's Report. The other report that's included, it's included in the back, is our report over the internal control, the city's internal control over its financial reporting. Similar to two thousand eighteen, we did identify some deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. And on this side, I have a definition of a material weakness. A material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented, prevented, detected, or corrected on a timely basis. And these are, these material weaknesses that were noted were are reported as in the back of the annual comprehensive financial report is finding two thousand nineteen dash one. Really, the the overarching theme in 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 these findings and material weaknesses is reconciliations. You know, reconciliations include things, reconciling the the bank statements, making sure that the bank statement reconciles to the general ledger, ensuring that all transactions that have occurred are being posted and included in in the the city's general ledger system. Reconciling subsidiary ledgers in the general ledger, i.e. utility accounts receivable, taxes receivable. You know, those subsidiary ledgers should be supporting what's in the financial statements and it's critical that those are are reconciled. You know, reconciling grant revenues with grant expenditures, you know, making sure you've requested all, you know, grant reimbursements out there. Do you have all the receivables recorded? You know, reconciling between the city's financials and the school board's financials. So the city has, and their system has, information related to the schools and the schools have their own system as well. And those two systems have to be reconciled. And, you know, these reconciliations should be done timely, on a timely basis, should be done, you know, at a minimum e- each month. And, you know, when you, when you get these in place, then, you know, if if you have these reconciliations put in place, then it prevents from having audit results such as we currently have. So certainly, our recommendation is that the city implement processes to improve those. And it sounds like working with the Robert Bob Group along with the the city's finance team, hopefully, that's that's underway. And then the last report from us is the the report, the Uniform Guidance Report, the federal compliance. This report was clean. We noted no federal award findings or question costs. So the the, we saw no instances of of noncompliance with the major federal grant programs. So that that report was clean. So that's all I have, but be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
All right, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, I have a question about how long it took to complete this audit. I think I read in some information with the previous financial, it was an assessment done by Alvarez and Marcel that you all began getting information in September of last year for this particular audit. So we're looking at September twenty-two. We're now September twenty-three. So that's a year. And why why is that?
So we we we, that's correct. We did start getting some information. In September, we, in September, October timeframe, received mostly information from the school board, also related to social services. So we did start our our field work and do some of the field work in September and October. We, that certainly was not a a comprehensive list, but there was still a lot of information we did not receive. So I believe it was in December when we finally received the majority of the rest of the information. So we really got started on the the rest of the audit, probably in January.
That's still a long time, average audit. And I understand that there are issues with this, you know, the problems that, I mean, why is it taking so long? And and it said it was finished June thirtieth, but it's September the twelfth today. So, you know, we didn't, we haven't received this until now. I I guess my my question is just, I mean, is the fact that we are, you talk about financial statements. We don't receive a financial statement. We don't receive a monthly financial, we don't receive anything monthly. Is that because of this cash reconciliation problem or?
Why you're not receiving monthly financial statements? I mean, I I can't speak to why you're not receiving.
We don't, we don't receive anything.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe having on my side is having the, you know, making sure, you know, that's part of the internal controls.
Right, and and I'm I'm sure that Mr. Bob is going to address all of this.
Right.
You know, that's part of his charge, but I guess I'm just concerned about why it took so long to do this.
I mean, I I can say, I mean, just audits in general take some time. So typically, you know, we'll do, start audits, you know, for a lot of localities in in May, June, July, do some of that interim work. You know, there's a lot of audit work that you can do even before you're ready for for having the financial statement. So we'll come in and do some control testing, some items that you can do, you know, compliance, that kind of stuff.
I I guess my question has to do, is is the reason that it's taking longer because of the poor record keeping? Is does that, does that affect the time?
That, I mean, that certainly, you you can get through a clean audit much faster than you can a messy audit.
Exactly.
You know, so I mean, that's.
That was my, yeah, I guess that's the answer to my question.
Sorry, sorry for the long-winded answer.
That's okay, that's fine.
But that's, I mean, you're exactly right. I mean, if things are clean and you can say, and you have the list, you can go down the list, tick, 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 tick.
Yeah.
Well, when you start going down the list and then you gotta, you know, it it's not there or there's issues with it and you gotta try and figure out what's going on, I mean, it 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 takes time.
Are you doing our annual financial statements? Are you all doing those? I mean?
Do we do your annual financial sta, no, we, I mean, we prepare the, like, we prepared what you have in front of you now.
Well, I haven't seen it yet, so.
So that, so we do the, this year for nineteen, using the records of the city, we put together those financial statements.
Piece it together.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
You're talking about the C F S or something?
Pardon?
The financial, the C F S report, C F S, whatever, what's the other report?
CAFR?
Yeah, the single audit. Oh, y'all, did y'all do that in here too?
Yes, ma'am, the 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 C F S. So C F S stands for the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So that's all part of the Uniform Guidance Audit. So if you look at the city's annual comprehensive financial report for eighteen and seventeen, sixteen, and, you know,
Right, right.
however far back, it never included that federal
I see.
grants piece. So that's what's new in
Okay.
in this report. So this include, it includes everything.
Okay.
So it's got all those pieces that you need.
All right.
Previous, some some places and and we'll try and get this piece done first and then they attack the federal compliance piece later. I mean, we gotta do it all at once anyway, so I I I prefer to get it all done at once.
Eighteen and seventeen's been done, correct?
Yeah, for the federal compliance, yes, ma'am.
Back, set eighteen and back of?
Yeah, so eighteen, so the the, so we, our firm did, we did, for federal, the the federal compliance, the Uniform Guidance, we did, we just finished nineteen, we did eighteen. And even though we didn't do the seventeen and sixteen financial report, we did do the single audit.
For those years as well?
I'm sorry.
For those years as well?
For sixteen and seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen have been done by us. Fifteen, I think, was Cherry Becker. And then we did, we did do, at the request of Head Start and the School Board, we did do
Yes.
a, we did what's called a program-specific audit where we just audited Head Start. And so we caught that up. So we did nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two for Head Start.
Right, that's good.
Very, very sad. Very sad.
All right, are there any other questions?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Doing a Mitch McConnell. Gracious. I don't know. Thank you for doing the Head Start information and getting them straight anyway. Oh, internal audits, I mean, internal controls. I've I've heard that for the last ten years. Is that basically a policy that's not being followed? Or is it something else that I should know about internal control? And once you identify that there's no internal control, do you go to the finance or whoever department and say, you need to do this? So I guess the city manager would have to do that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we we, our process shows what we think is deficient. And then we say, look, this is what's deficient, and we certainly can work. I mean, we don't, we don't develop the the corrective action plan. We're, we identify the issue, tell you what it is. Now, certainly, I mean, my door's always open, but, you know, I'm always available. Hey, you know, and, you know, Mr. Terry will talk to me and and get things, so, you know, certainly, we can help advise.
Maybe that's what Mr. Bob is here for, is that right? To give us guidelines on how to correct that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that one day we won't have an internal control problem. See, like somebody by Nashville figured out what to write something to fix the internal control that you that you don't have. I don't know why that's so difficult, once it's identified. Maybe I'm not, I'm just speaking out of frustration.
All right.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, seeing no lights. Thank you very much for tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right, we're going to move on to communications from citizens. Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
A communications from citizens period limited in total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing council shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked to the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, I have a bunch of people signed up for the public hearing. This is the communications from citizens part. So if you'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you know, please come forward. I don't have anyone signed up right now. Okay, hearing none. We're going to move into our public hearing. Mr. Ward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's public hearing is in regards to the requested amendments to the city's rental inspection program. Just to give some quick background, the purpose of the rental inspection program, which Just to give some quick background, uh, the purpose of the rental inspection program, which, um, to make a note, is already on the books. Um, it's, it's part of City Code now. But the purpose of the rental inspection program is to maintain safe, decent, and sanitary living conditions for tenants and neighboring residents in Hopewell. Um, if implemented properly, a rental inspection program can reduce and prevent blight, it can stabilize neighborhoods, uh, build resident pride, improve, uh, the impression of the city to outsiders, foster community development, and help maintain real estate values in the city. Back in twenty twenty-two, so last year, uh, council requested the Department of Development to revive the rental inspection program. Primarily because the problems that we were having with implementation was that, uh, we just didn't have, um, a good compliance rate. And there were really no, there was no teeth to the ordinance at the time, so there were no repercussions for somebody, um, not participating in the program. So this, the department was tasked with investigating, adding some potential fees, and, uh, taking another look at the areas to be identified for the rental inspection program. Uh, we came back to you in January at a work session with, uh, proposal on fees. And, uh, once again, came back to you in May with some, uh, answers to your original questions and some revisions, uh, to the amendment. Um, tonight, uh, is the public hearing and we are asking for action at the end of this, if, um, you deem it necessary. So originally, uh, the rental inspection program had identified, um, I think it was four areas in the city uh, that were to be rental inspection areas, and they were, um, rather large, included, um, quite a number of units. Uh, myself and our rental inspector, Ms. Loving, decided that we would take another look at how to identify those areas that would, uh, should be subject to the rental inspection program. And we looked at code violations. And basically identified fifteen area, we broke the city up into fifteen areas, um, with an approximate equal number of rental units in each zone, um, to make it more manageable and to get a better idea of, um, how we could compare areas of the city to each other. Your packet may, may differ, if you have a copy of the presentation, um, than what I'm showing tonight, because, um, after some discussion with, with Ms. Loving this morning, I thought I would revert back to three hundred max units per year for one inspector. And your packet I had included four hundred and fifty, um, thinking that possibly we could, uh, we would ask you to identify three rental inspection zones this evening. But after discussing this with, with Ms. Loving, we think for the first year, we think, um, three hundred units would be a, a good number to restart the program on. We will come back to you after the first year with a report on how the program went. And we, of course, uh, will come back to you sooner than that if, um, Ms. Loving's able to address these approximate three hundred units sooner than one year. So anyway, I, I apologize for the discrepancy from what's in your packet versus what I'm showing tonight, but we feel like three hundred max units for the first year, uh, would be the most reasonable. To account for those three hundred units, we think area or zones fifteen and one, which have the highest number of violations in the city, would be the two appropriate areas to designate for the rental inspection program. And, um, again, that's, um, that's showing that zones fifteen and one have the highest number of code violations. And here's the map, um, that's gonna show you those two areas. Fifteen is in the southern part of the city, and Zone One is essentially up in City Point. Back of the work session in May, uh, one, one of the, um, hot topics of discussion was on the fees that were being proposed. Um, state code does not allow the city to establish a registration fee. So there is no registration fee for landlords to enter the program. Uh, originally, staff was proposing a one hundred dollar initial inspection fee, but at the May work session, uh, you all as council members achieved a consensus that, um, to remove that fee. So, uh, staff has done that, uh, and that is also reflected in the draft ordinance that you should have received in your packet. So the way it will work is a landlord will register with the program. There is no initial inspection fee for Ms. Loving to go do her, and conduct her initial inspection. Uh, if violations are identified, the landlord's given a, a time and an opportunity to make corrections. The reinspection fee would also be zero dollars. But upon that reinspection, if the inspector, uh, continues to identify in, uh, violations, then, uh, subsequent inspections would have a fee attached to them. And, um, it's gonna vary, um, just depending on how many reinspections the inspector must make until all the corrections are made. Other fees would be a failure to schedule an inspection and unresolved major violations, which, um, ultimately would be assessed by a judge. We had solicited public comment, um, previous, uh, both for, uh, when this was presented to Planning Commission, as well as, um, we've been notifying, um, property owners within the targeted areas, uh, for both the work sessions and tonight's public hearing. We were doing that by sending out postcards. And the draft ordinance has been on the city's website on the main page for approximately two weeks for anybody to view it. We have received some comments through the course of all this. Uh, one comment came from the Realtors Association. We actually had a meeting with, a very good meeting with them. Were they, uh, were just proposing, um, asking you all to consider a potential exemption from the program, and that would be for, uh, properties managed by persons who are, have one of these three certifications from a Realtors Association. Staff at this time is not proposing an exemption for the program. We feel like we would like to get one year under our belts to see how it goes. And then maybe at the end of the, at the end of the first year, when I come back and give a report to you about, um, how the program was, um, implemented, then we can, we can, um, address that question again. The program, uh, we, we want to implement the program, um, utilizing quite an information campaign. We will have a website set up so that all landlords can access all the forms that are necessary, the inspection forms. Um, we will be sending out individual notifications to property owners in the zones. Um, will, we will assist any landlord who needs assistance with the program. We will meet with anyone who has questions about the program, um, so that we can have, uh, the highest registration compliance rate that we can get. Uh, Ms. Loving, of course, will work with landlords, uh, as, as best she can to, uh, get her inspection scheduled um, at a time when it is convenient for these landlords. And then ultimately, we hope, um, through the inspection process, that a large majority of our landlords can be certified where they would not face another inspection, um, for four years. With the issuance of a certificate, there, there's a tiered compliance. Um, the certificate of compliance is good for four ye- excuse me, for four years. Um, that's assuming we don't receive any complaints during that time. Uh, there's a temporary certificate of compliance that's allowed, that we would issue if someone had some minor violations that were, uh, easily correctable and, and were not, um, seen as life and safety issues. We could issue a rejection if a, uh, property has major issues or if a property is uninhabitable. And, um, the fourth statement here about certificates is that they can be revoked if violations are found within the four-year grace period. I'm not gonna go through this final chart, but this is a chart that pretty much explains the process. This will be on the website and available to landlords so that they can understand our process for implementing the program. Again, we are seeking voluntary compliance as much as possible. That's pretty much the end of my presentation. Um, available for any questions, um, and then Mr. Mayor, I guess, for the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions? Uh, Counselor Holloway?
Thank you, uh, thank you for your, your work. Thank you for your work, uh, thus far. I do have a couple of questions, though, about the, I think it's the proposed fee process. Is it the failure to schedule the inspection portion? I don't necessarily have a problem with the fee or anything. So how does that work? So like, if the, if, if we pass this tonight to go forward with it, what's the timeframe that you're giving the citizens? Because there, I, I guess there would have to be a, like a training, you said Ms. Loving will help any landlord that will need the help. But like, if we pass it tonight, this isn't something that's gonna be automatically implemented? How long will it be before they will have to comply to this?
Right, that's a good question.
Sixty?
Sixty days.
Sixty days?
Darling, you have to come up to this.
So, so, so basically sixty day, not from the approval, I hope, I hope it would be sixty days from notice.
Notification.
Okay, perfect. All right, sixty days, that's perfect. All right, and then the other thing, um, it says the unresolved major violations assessed by judge. Are you talking about the court judge or you have?
Yes, that's like if, if we have someone that's living in a house that is uninhabitable and they won't comply with it, then our final part would be to, you know, it, go to magistrate, issue a summons, and then any fines would be determined by the judge. And they can be determined by per day or one set fee.
Okay, so, so just for clarification, this five hundred to twenty-five hundred is something that the judge is just imposing, or are you, or would this be in addition to court fines and stuff?
That would be dependent upon the judge, his decision.
Okay, and then the last, oh, two more questions. I didn't see anything about an appeals process. So if someone receives a hundred dollar for a man or violation, where is the appeals process in it? Because it would have to be an appeals process.
Well, they won't receive a hundred dollars for a violation. They would receive a hundred dollars if they failed the first two inspections. They would have to pay for the third inspection. Or if they didn't pass it, then we would put, it's in the ordinance that we can place that hundred dollars on the real estate property, so that it will put a lien on the property if they, they're registered as a renter and they don't comply.
Okay, so, so my question still would be standing, where would be the appeals process? Because if somebody feels like they are, um, well, I can't even think of the word, discriminated against or something of that nature, any, anything could, like they don't, like they came in and the inspector says, hey, this is wrong, but there was a, a, a switch off to the electric or anything of that nature, how would they appeal this process?
Well, what they would do is go above my head and they would go to the building official, Mr. Hall. And if they're not comfortable with that, there is the Board of Construction that has an appeals process
Okay.
that they can go through.
Okay, and then my last question was, you spoke about the four-year inspection. I do, I think, remember when I read through everything the last time, that there was, this four-year is only limited to if the landlord has a tenant that's residing in there for four years. They still have to get a separate inspection if there's only a one-year lease and then somebody new comes the following year, correct?
Correct, that, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the four-year certificate would be good if the tenant remained the same through the whole four years and there were no, uh, reported complaints.
Okay, so that's good that the landlord doesn't have to repay for that new expect, inspection unless there's failed violations.
Correct, and then, of course, if the tenant, if they do have a change in tenancy, there, there's no charge for the first inspection anyway, so.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Uh, I do have a question. So, the, the landlords are not correcting these deficiencies of people that's renting inside?
Not a landlord.
I'm sorry?
The renter, he's not paying for these.
No, no, the, the responsibility falls upon the landlord to make the, any corrections.
Tell me again how you determine, I know houses in Hopewell that individual landlords own, not like a big corporation. How do you, you know that, that person?
So right now, um, we are using a, um, it's a GIS system called Building Blocks that uses an algorithm actually to, uh, it's very simple. It actually looks at the owner and the address of record, and it compares it to, uh, where the owner, uh, the address of the property. And it determines, and it makes a guess as to whether, um, it makes an assumption that an owner whose address is different than the property you're looking at is, is a landlord and lives somewhere else. Um, so we will be contacting those people individually, and I'm sure it's gonna get some of these wrong, it's gonna miss a few. That's to be expected. Um, but as we roll the pro, program out again, we'll try to, we'll, we'll work out those kinks and.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause I, I've, I've visited a lot of homes in the city that had a lot of, quite a few zoning issues. But if the renter understanding called zone, they couldn't, uh, y'all couldn't do anything, correct? But the, not the rental inspection program is different.
It is, well, the rental inspection program is proactive, whereas, you know, just sort of standard code enforcement's gonna be reactive.
Right.
And, and the whole point of this being that rental units are, are at a level at the time when the tenant moves in, that they're of a, a safe, decent, and sanitary at the time they move in, and not that they move into an unsatisfactory unit, uh, and then have to report it to the city later.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Counselor Holloway?
That's, so this is a good statement, 'cause I was about to ask a question about that. So will the, will this, um, inspection program obligate the landlords? Is there anything in place that will obligate the landlords to give information to their tenants about this rental inspection program? 'Cause you could have it out there and the tenants still not even know about it.
There's nothing in the ordinance that requires a landlord to notify a tenant of the program?
Is there something that we can put in there? 'Cause it, it seems like that would, that would help the success of the, that would help the, um, the program be more successful? Because if the tenants still, you know, don't know about it or something like that.
Yeah, it'll, it'll absolutely require some education on our part to educate citizens. Uh, Ms. Loving's put together a little pamphlet that, um, will be distributed out in the, in the zone areas. As the idea, we'll have it available in our office. Um, it'll be on the website as well. So there is an education component, which is gonna, um, take some startup time. It'll, you know, um, that's, we're gonna be heavy on that at the front end of, of the implementation of the program. So when, by the time Ms. Loving gets out there to actually start doing inspections, we're looking at, it's gonna be a little while.
Right.
Uh, we're gonna have to get education out there, get people signed up, get inspections scheduled. That's gonna take some time.
And then, I guess the, the other thing that prompted a question was when y'all were talking about, um, using whatever process that you have to determine the landlords and so forth, and then having a sixty-day window. For the people who are like out of town, 'cause that's one of the complaints I hear from citizens all the time, that they're, of course, they're landlords, that they get in, rent from them, they collect pay, but they're not able to contact them. What is the process that's for, for those people who may not respond or say they don't know anything about it? What's that process?
For, for non-responsive landlords? Did you want to?
We have the initial registration, we have the initial registration letter and information set out. And then, if we don't receive anything at all from them, we have a second letter that is set up to go out in thirty days after that. So working with munis and getting munis to set them up initially, and then to be able to run a report, so that we'll have all the ones that we haven't had a response from will go out again. As of right now, in code compliance, we started a spreadsheet that every rental house that we go to for failure to cut grass, trash and debris, which is mostly rental move-out things, we have down in that spreadsheet, we have the owner's current address, and we have phone numbers, and we're working on emails. So we're going every step of the way that we can to try to reach them, because we don't want them to spend a lot of money paying, you know, paying the contractors that the city hires. We'd rather give them the opportunity, and we'd rather work with them.
Right.
So that's what we've been trying to set up ahead of the program in the, just the regular code enforcement part.
Excellent.
One other question, are there two inspectors or one? What happened to the other one? Tell me again, what happened to the other one? We had an inspector a long time ago, before she came.
You asked, you asked that at the, at the last.
I did, I do remember, I'm having one of those moments again. What's her name? Senior McConnell, I'm having a McConnell moment.
At the, at the, the last work session. And so, I, I did quite a bit of investigation on that. I contacted the former director.
Please let me know what she said.
And she says that, and, and I hope I get this right, because it's a little tricky. So there, there was a position for a rental inspector back, I think, two or three building officials ago.
We were.
And probably two directors ago. And at the time when council essentially put the, the halt to the program, which I believe was in 2012.
Yeah.
Okay, it's okay.
Instead of letting that position go, that position was moved as to a code enforcement That's my understanding.
Okay.
So it was a, so, so would it?
So currently, we, council has approved more recently, within the last two years, the, the rental inspection position.
So I thought the last... So we have to approve to be able to have two, or is that already in?
If, if you, if you are to utilize what was provided as the first rental inspector, we would, we would then have to lose a code inspector.
I don't want to do that, I'm asking to have an additional inspector.
You certainly could, you certainly can create a second, what would be a second position.
In the last presentation, didn't you have the, the cost of the salaries and everything? You can send that to us?
Uh, I did, it was in that, in that last presentation, yes, I certainly can provide that to you.
I think, okay. All right, that sounds good, well. Would that be something that y'all would be requesting?
I'm sorry, sir?
It did.
Is that, is that something that you all?
We are not requesting a second inspector at this time. We, we feel like, let's get the program rolled out, let's work out the kinks, because we know those are going to be there. Let's just see how the first year goes, and then when I can, when I come back to you after a year, if we feel that a second inspector is necessary, then we will put that proposal forward.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you please read the statement?
All persons. All persons addressing council shall step to the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is the subject of the motion. See rules 405 and 406.
Okay, the first person that I have signed up tonight is Ms. Marsha Lowe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I've sat through a couple of these on this.
Before you start to speak, do you mind, yeah, lowering it, and then just state your name?
Marsha Lowe.
And then, what locality you live in?
I live in Prince George, but we have properties here in Hopewell. And I'm a longtime former resident of Hopewell, went to Hopewell High. My big concerns with the program are predominantly relating to the lack of specifics about what the inspection is going to entail. What is a minor violation? What is a major violation? None of that is spelled out. It's kind of seems up to the inspector, which is not a good way to do business, needs to be spelled out, so we all know what we're looking at. Everybody should be on an even playing field, no surprises. And the new request that came in, that there would be an exemption for certain sets of landlords because of them being realtors, I do not agree with. If there's going to be a program for landlords, it needs to be, again, applicable to everyone. Everyone should have an equal playing field in this. And that's pretty much it. If they can have a list of what they're going to be looking at, other than just saying Chapter Thirty-four of the Virginia Uniform Building Code, I spent today looking at that, and that doesn't necessarily provide me with any specific guidance. So I think that if you're going to institute this program, it needs to be very clear what we're looking at, what our standards are, and what a minor violation is.
Thank you. All right, next person up is Mr. Jerry Broughton.
I thought we decided my name.
Oh.
She did everything I need.
All right, next person is Mary Ann White.
Good evening, Mayor Parton, Vice Mayor Gore, and fellow members of council. My name is Mary Ann White, and I reside in Prince George County. I'm here tonight on behalf of the South Side Virginia Association of Realtors. We generally support the program, and we welcome the opportunity to partner with the city to ensure the availability of safe, habitable shelter for its residents. Thank you for not including the hundred dollars initial registration fee that was originally proposed in the proposal that is before you, and for not proposing a fee on the initial reinspection. We would encourage, however, the city to make a technical amendment to clarify that the requirement for inspection upon a sale is not triggered when the home is sold or transferred to someone who will be a owner occupant. Thank you very much.
All right, next I have up is Tyler Craddock.
Good evening, Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Tyler Craddock, I am the Governmental Affairs Director for the South Side Virginia Association of Realtors, 114 Maple Grove Avenue, Colonial Heights, 23834. Would reiterate, reiterate the points raised by Ms. White. From the beginning, we want to express our appreciation of your staff, staff has been good and open about working with us back and forth, and there's some, and conversations with council members as well. So we, we're supportive of what Mr. Ward presented, and look forward to the opportunity. I know that we, we, you know, may have had some asks in there, you know, it's like Christmas time, we don't, Santa ain't always good to all of us. But we do look forward to working with you all, and working with staff over the years you implement, and we can come, there are other things we can come out and have conversations about at a later date in time. So with that, we're just always happy to answer any questions, and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Jennifer Raznick.
She left.
All right, next is Larry Lewis. And then the next I have, it looks like Shane, but I can't make out the last name. Oh, Shayna, okay.
Shayna.
My apologies for that.
Trying to be incognito.
Good evening, Mayor Parton, esteemed members of city council, and dedicated city staff. My name is Shayna Story, I'm the broker-owner of Par and Abernathy Realty here in Hopewell that's been in business since 1986, and we have a fairly prominent property management division with a large concentration of rentals here in the city. We are located in Ward Two. I stand before you today as a proud partner of the co-compliance office for over two decades. As indicated, I have had the pleasure of managing rental properties for our company for over twenty-three years. We have seen firsthand the positive impact of our collaborative efforts on the housing conditions in our community. I am here to express my wholehearted support for the re-implementation of the City of Hopewell's rental inspection program. This program is crucial in ensuring that all of our residents have a safe, inhabitable space to call home. While we recognize the importance of maintaining dwelling units to be fit, inhabitable, with aesthetically pleasing exteriors, we must also remember that this initiative should not only encompass rental properties, but also owner-occupied dwelling units, as well as vacant and abandoned residential and commercial buildings. I ask that the city take the blinders off and be proactive when on the streets. Should the inspector notice a violation of an adjacent owner-occupied dwelling when performing a rental inspection, the necessary actions should be taken. While I understand the staff is limited, and the code compliance works on a complaint basis, I feel it imperative that all dwelling and commercial structures you encounter be addressed if there is a need. Let us dispel any miscommunications that rental properties are inherently less maintained than their owner-occupied counterparts. Instead, let us focus on our collective responsibility for the well-being of our community. By reinvigorating the rental inspection program, we affirm our commitment to the safety, comfort, and dignity of every Hopewell resident. It is by necessity that we approach this initiative with a comprehensive perspective, acknowledging the challenges posed by both our limited and aging housing stock throughout the city. I urge you all to support this inspection program. Together, we can continue to build a city where every individual has access to housing that is not only safe and habitable, but a source of pride. Thank you for your dedication, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing that did not sign up? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, I see Counselor Holloway's light.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad the, excuse me for not remembering your name, but the lady had spoke on that major manor, because that's actually one of the questions I had written down, and I missed. So, yeah, could you be so kind?
That's a, that's a great question. The actual inspection form that Ms. Loving will be using will be on the city's website for anybody to download and see. We are also planning on sending it out with the initial contact, so that a landlord has that form at the very beginning, so they know what items are on the inspection list, and if they should be broken out, minor versus major, so that it should be very clear as to exactly what she's looking at, and what constitutes a minor versus a major violation. So, and if anybody here that's here tonight wants to see this list now, we, we'd be happy to send it out. We're still in the process of getting the webpage put together, but we hope to have that up in probably about, depending on what happens tonight, hopefully within about two weeks.
Sounds good to me. Oh, and then the other thing, I think, I'm sorry, forgive me for, I'm, I forgot which person stated about making the friendly amendment. I think we also received the email, all the counselors have received the email.
I don't, I don't think it's written currently that it would trigger. If it's being sold to an owner occupant, then it would come out of the program. Yeah, it would, it would come out of the program, so.
If it's, if it's a rental property, and I, I rent it, and I decide I want to rent to own, then it would come out of the rental program, because it would be written up differently, correct, Mary?
Basically, what we're saying is, if the homeowner decides to sell the property, and it is sold, should there be a way for them to notify the compliance office? Or do you all see that on the tax records? We want to make sure it won't trigger up, if they're already under the program, it won't keep triggering them to be staying if it's sold, or the owner occupied. Or if the owner occupies it.
They would, the property owner would just need to notify us as a department, and it would come out of the program. Yeah, because it's no longer a rental property.
Okay.
So it would not trigger an inspection.
Have you finished, Counselor Holloway?
Again, we're, we're working towards voluntary compliance, we want to work with folks, so, just to reiterate that point.
Yeah, but rent to own means, when they finally make a sale, is sold, not, because suppose everybody renters say, well, I'm going to rent to own, you might, you don't have, can you rent for two years?
Well, well, that would just depend on.
I don't know, I'm not a realtor.
That, that would depend on how.
A, a rent to own situation would fall under this program.
Wouldn't that depend on, wouldn't that depend on?
Until they actually have paid off, and they own it.
That's, that's my point.
Yes, ma'am.
Once they sell it, then it gets out, not while they enter the concept of rent to own.
That's correct.
You can rent to own for ten years.
Right.
So, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't be, I think you'd probably have to find some legal, because I think it would just depend on how that is structured, because you have people who purchase homes by relinquish, rent to own by relinquish the owner, what is it called? Owner's financing, so the owner relinquishes the title over, so the person becomes temporarily full owner, it's just by note, right?
Right, but generally, what happens with that is, even with rent, you know, rent to own, the bank, they set up an account at a bank, and the property actually kind of like goes into that name, and they are registered as an owner unless they default on the loan, and then it's taken back.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, so then it wouldn't be considered.
So it wouldn't be in the program.
Right, that's what I was thinking, it wouldn't be, okay. Thank, so we.
I think Mrs. White had a comment.
From our understanding, a rent to own is just that, a rent to own, until the deed is actually recorded.
Thank you.
That is when it comes out of the rental department, or if an owner has had a rental, and he decides, or they decide to move back to the community.
Right.
And live in the property, then we want to make sure it comes out of the rental. Is that clarification?
That's clear.
Yes.
All right. Much, much clearer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions?
We can make the motion now.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that the rental inspe, inspection program amended as is, including the amendment of the four hundred and fifty to three hundred, will be stated as presented.
Okay.
Is that enough? Mr. Mayor? It's a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
It's a public hearing, so no action.
She closed.
No, they were requesting for action.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right, so I've got, so the motion on the floor is to approve the program and ordinance as presented tonight.
Yes.
Okay. It's been properly seconded by Counselor Harris. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Powell?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Counselor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Gore is no longer on, she had to step away. So just record her as a excused absence. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, is it repeal and replace the amendment, is that the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. R one, Ms. Smith?
All right. Before you all in City Council, we have a proposed ordinance for the transient occupancy and transient lodging tax. Here we have changes that are just simple additions that add definitions to the ordinance. For example, it adds the title of commissioner of revenue, person, retail sale, and room charge. There are also minor charges that are proposed to section thirty-four dash one forty-eight, which completes the duties and responsibilities of the commissioner of revenue's powers and provides for a copy of all of the rules and regulations to be on file in the commissioner's office for public examination. Another minor change is that section thirty-four dash one fifty-six in that there is a change in the rate, where there is a change in the rate for the ordinance, it must be provided to the State Department of Tax within thirty days from the effective date of change. Where such notice of any local transient occupancy and transient provider tax is not provided to the State Department of Tax, the, the tax rate is, is applied for thirty days after the notice is provided to the state. City Council can here either review and continue this ordinance to be continued to the next regular meeting or adopt the meeting tonight. It's up to council. And that's pursuant to chapter four, section eight of the city charter.
Now take it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we should. Yeah, me personally, I think it'd probably be better for these that we have amendments to ordinances. I think we should put them before public hearings so we can allow, I know certain ones you can, you can and you don't have to do, but I think just as good form and good policy.
Yes, okay, if we can continue it to September twenty-sixth.
Is everyone okay with that? I see one, two, all right, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of north and south, okay. Okay, moving on to R two.
R two, this item is a proposed change to the city's FOIA policy. Essentially that there have been changes by the Virginia General Assembly to two point two dash thirty-seven zero four point one, requiring the FOIA fee policy to be published to the city's website. Also, to have the fee structure also published to the city's website. This is a twenty twenty-three amendment to the Virginia Code and we need to bring the City of Hopewell's policy and procedure in compliance with the state law.
So the, so this is just enacted?
Correct.
We haven't adopted it yet?
No. So currently, the city's policy is that FOIA requests are handled through the city attorney's office and that they are feed or, the, the fee comes from the employee, the requested employee's hourly rate times the number of hours. That's the current city policy. City Council does not have to keep that city, that policy, they can change it to a flat fee structure or a flat per page fee structure. It's up to City Council.
Can you add the page structure too?
I'm sorry.
I got Counsel Denton, Pellum, and then Holloway.
The examples you gave us in our packet, I looked at those and it looked like Colonial Heights had the, the best, it was so much per hour.
Right.
And then, what, do you have an opinion since you all do the FOIAs?
Yes, we do, and we do a lot of work.
Which would be the?
Yes, ma'am. I, I would probably recommend that it is a flat fee structure per request, per hour. It's the easiest for citizens to understand. Whenever there is a request, for example, if there's a document that say the city manager needs to pull from her documents or whatever that she provides, we make the request to the city manager. Her hourly rate is calculated, which is going to be different than the hourly rate of someone who is in public works. So unfortunately, it's really hard for citizens to kind of figure out, well, how is my rate going to be calculated? Is, is it going to be high, is it going to be low? I think a flat hourly rate is probably the easiest thing for citizens.
Okay, thank you.
And, and does that mean, you said it means next, right?
Yes.
That mean if it's ca, is her, involves her and then she has to relate to other people, do their hourly rate, is their hourly rate included too, if some other department has to?
Yes.
Okay?
So we, for example.
How many people involved, that's how you do the hourly flat rate?
Yes, ma'am. So if, if a request is for a particular document, if it's from the police department for a motor vehicle accident and the police report, the person pulling the document tells us how many, how long it took them and their hourly rate, based on their salary.
Can you do hourly rate plus administrative costs?
No, code section doesn't allow for administrative costs. It doesn't even allow for redactions to be taken out as far as time wise. That's just something that this city attorney's office has to do.
Do we have, you finished?
Yes.
Do we have a, to come up with that figure, do we have the median number hourly for that flat rate? Because I, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a median number.
A median based on, on highs and lows or salaries of the city? I can certainly provide you all with the median salary for the city and then return back.
The hourly one, so we can compare flat rate. So like, for instance, if you're calculating a city manager's hourly rate at a hundred and eleven dollars and then the lowest paid person may only be twelve dollars and some change. And inclusive of both.
I can provide City Council with the median hourly rate based on salaried and non-salaried employees.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're gonna do this next.
Yes, we can continue it.
Yeah, I'd recommend this go also before a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, R three?
So tonight before City Council, the R three item is a proposed change to the sewer use connection fee. This changes the fee structure where there's already an existing sewer connection on a lot that can, has either a structure on it or a structure was previously removed. The minor change is that the subdivision of the lots, where there was a pre-existing sewer connection that can be used for a subservient lot, that fee would be changed from the original fee of two thousand, I believe it's twenty-one dollars, to a fee of two hundred dollars. That's the only proposed change.
Okay. We need to make a motion on that? I was personally going to recommend we do a public hearing on it as well.
That's recommendation.
Yeah.
That's recommendation.
I was making a motion, but.
I mean, you can still make a motion.
But her recommendation.
I thought we had discussed this and.
Yeah.
We did.
Did we have a public hearing on this?
No, 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 not public hearing, that was enclosed.
No, we had a close.
That was in closed session. Right.
It was not a public.
And but there was also.
We can make a motion for, I mean, I'm just.
We had a work session on this, didn't we?
No, no, we had a closed, we had a closed session about a specific property.
Oh, okay, right.
It was a closed session.
Yeah, about a specific property.
Okay. Counsel Denton?
Okay. Since we have talked about this and we're familiar with it, I would like to make a motion that we make these corrected changes to the sewer connection fee as presented by the city attorney.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion does for a lack of a second. Is everyone all right with making this a public hearing for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
That was her recommendation.
Okay. Okay. All right, and last item, R four. Doctor Manker, you still online?
I am, Mayor Parton members of City Council tonight, it's just a simple request. I am requesting that remediation and PMO Services Contingency Fund approval. The purpose for this, a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars is for the remaining of the funds that we declare as lost revenue. It's been set aside, I think last week Ben Rupert presented to you guys the remaining of those funds that was left in the balance. And tonight, I'm asking council to set aside those funds to allow the city manager to set aside those funds for any outstanding requests that may come about during the remediation process with our audit.
Okay. Counsel Pellum?
Doctor Manker.
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Rob, he hasn't worked enough to get the million dollars, we already promised, and we want to give him another money in reserve, I don't understand that concept.
No, no, ma'am, it's not for the Robert Bob group per se. It, it, it may be for other things like software related to the munis system. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to pay Mister Bob for those services. If there happens to be a munis module change or upgrade or something that we does not, do not have connected, that's going to allow us to perform this work, that may be a requirement. There, there may be other things outside of the Robert Bob group that may be required. Also, change of scope. As we continue through this process, there may be additional things that's outside of the original scope that we would like for him to do or consider or to look into. Those funds would be set aside for that, for those reasons as well.
And as they come up, maybe, well, my recommendation would be for you to bring it to us, I guess, as they arise or something, but.
And I agree.
Oh, but maybe we can hold off on spending our last.
Absolutely.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. Yeah, we did have three hundred and some.
We had three hundred and some thousand, how'd it get down to one twenty? Oh, we gave that money to Charles Bennett out of the ARPA fund?
Oh, that money got to be talked.
Yeah, remember we purchased that piece of property.
Yeah, that money's coming back though.
Yeah, and then we also did the, what was it, the Public Safety Communication System.
That money coming back from Charles Bennett, right?
The battery generator.
Right, the generator. Money coming back from Charles Bennett, right?
When he sells it.
Yeah, when he sells it.
No, 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 we couldn't buy it. Never mind. Not what I heard.
Yeah.
All right, anyway.
I see that we tabled that, I don't think that it, we should give that, those, that funding right now. And you specifically talking about munis, wouldn't that come out of, I think we should just table those funds, I mean, table that.
Is that a motion?
So I guess, I think I kind of see, I see where folks are kind of going with this. I think one thing that we kind of talked a little bit earlier in this process is maybe have a contingency fund for emergencies. And I think that that would probably be a very good place to put this. I, I think that that would probably be better because we don't know, I guess a good example that I always go back to is the the massive sinkhole that was behind Broadway Baptist. That, you know, ended up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix because of previous city councils, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. I mean, is that something that everyone's amenable to, is putting it in a emergency contingency fund?
I'm, I'm with it.
If it's in an emergency contingency fund.
Well, we have contingency.
Emergencies, right?
Correct.
But, but we have contingency.
It could be something associated with this.
Correct.
All right, I'm all right with it.
So I make a motion to.
Not emergency, this, the contingency fund, we already have one.
Yeah, we have a contingency fund, so.
Just add it to it.
We got, it's not called contingency, what is it called?
Well, we had a contingency fund, but that's when, in the budget year, I think it was like two or three years ago, we cut it out because when we point blank asked the city manager at the time what he spent the money on, he couldn't definitively tell us.
I think he did.
No. That was the biggest point of contention, that's why we pulled it back. And then after he left, we found out through Doctor Manker on what those funds were spent on, which were legitimate things.
Emergency Reserve Fund, is it emerg, can you label it Emergency Reserve Fund? Is there some sort of allocation budget, since we don't have a, I don't have a line for line budget.
I mean, we are the naming nothing, it's, it's in offer.
It's in, it's in.
So let us stay there.
We have it in our general funding, if we need it, we can just pull it, I don't think we have to name it anywhere at this point.
We could keep it there, I, I was just, you know, trying to think of something that, you know, was amenable for everybody.
Yeah. I think we can leave it where it is.
What's the last day we have to spend it, Doctor Mander?
We, we don't have one because we, we moved it from ARPA funds to general funding.
So Ms. Pellum, if I can answer your question, we, if, if we don't spend the monies, the dollars will remain where they are. And at the end of the day, they'll drop back down to the general fund if, if we make it to the end of the project and, and don't need to spend it. But I, I would just urge us against having earmarked these dollars because we need to have, all projects need to have contingency funds. We, we're just too early, three weeks into this process, we're just too early in this project without knowing what, what a foreseeable. These are the last of the quote unquote ARPA funding. And anything, if we spend these dollars, any additional funding will have to come from some other source. It either come from savings, from salary savings or to come from unassigned fund balance.
I mean, if we need them.
My contingency is the fact that if I was a contractor, and I know you had put money in the bank for me, I think I'll find some kind of way to use it. And so.
It's not for him personally.
I know what you're saying there, but still, he's a part of the equation that he potentially. Anyway, I just say we keep the money as its numbered, as it, as a nomer, ARPA funds and call it a day. Until we need them for something, you bring it back and we, we'll vote on it.
We can call a special meeting if needed to be.
It's, it's gonna be there, even the operational funds, it's gonna be a part of our bank, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Okay, there's.
Port of order, how you gonna tell somebody adjourning and people in the middle of their speech?
I thought you were just rambling, you didn't finish?
Call it what you want, we were talking, having a conversation, discussion.
Well, we're drawing my motion, I thought you were talking to her at that time.
No, 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 sir. But anyway, I, we said, it's something, she gave us a, a report and I think we should make, I'll make a motion that we put it on the table to, to, to need it, to the funds are needed.
That's basically how it is.
Yes.
Huh?
Can you restate that?
I would like to put a motion on the floor that we tape, that we keep the, the funds normed as ARPA funds as they are.
No, they, it's not ARPA.
I don't get what it's called. Keep the money, a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars in.
In the unassigned ARPA.
As contingency until needed.
Okay.
With a specific whatever need, I mean, to identify the need and then bring that to us for spinager.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, it is to to place the remaining ARPA slash lost revenue funds into a contingency line item.
That's good.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counsel Pellum and seconded by Counsel Joyner. Roll call please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
No.
Counsel Pellum?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Let me get a point of information. If I put it, if you put it in contingency form, funding is has to be requested by council.
Correct.
So yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay.
Okay, and you can do your adjournment.
That's right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Well, you voted against your adjournment, so I.